Ready?
Yep.
It is five forty-five, January eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. We are open up for a public hearing on Native American policies and procedures. The short presentation by Mr. Clapsettle, and then we'll be open to any public comments.
Thank you, Chairman White. This is part of our requirements within the policy to provide open forum to allow the public to ask any questions or make any comments about our Native American policies and procedures. It is by no means the only opportunity that folks have to provide feedback. We provide meetings online for them to submit a form with for questions and comments. My information, my contact information email and office phone is available as well. Also included in those efforts are meeting with Native American parent groups at least twice a year. We try to do it more often when we can, and also consulting with and meeting with tribal leadership at least twice a year. And allow typically it's the chief's office for a sit-down meeting and provide them the opportunity to look over any data, ask questions, or make comments about our Native American policies and procedures. All of this is part of a big point of emphasis of the Department of Ed in regards to impact aid is opening up communication, making sure we're communicating through the means that our community best not only receives information, but can also give us information as well. That's really important to them and also important to us to make sure we provide as many means to communicate as possible, but also allow that to work both ways. So that's why we're here tonight. That's just one way to do that. Do y'all have any questions or comments about the policies and procedures? As I told Mr. Schell this morning, there's as far as I know, there's nothing changed from the policies and procedures that were approved last year.
Anything to be changed in that just after the day is move it forward here. So I suppose that we just take the next ten minutes, and if anybody comes in and has a comment, we can sort of, I suppose, that's how it works.
I think it's a lot of government. Does anyone currently in the audience have any comment specifically on Public Policy Code forty-sixty, Native American policies and procedures? For the record, we're not at this time, but we will, I guess, be at ease for just a moment to see if anyone comes in in the next ten minutes that may have a public comment on the Native American policies and procedures.
Yeah, yeah, true, man.
Everybody singing.
Yes.
How about you?
Your eyes are retired.
College.
Good afternoon to everybody that's just walked in. We had had a brief presentation at five forty-five concerning the Native American policies and procedures, and had given fifteen minutes for any public comment before we get started on our regular meeting. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to have any kind of comment on the policy forty-sixty, Native American policies and procedures? Seeing none, then we'll go ahead and start our six o'clock.
So this evening, we have some representatives from a couple of schools who are one percent growth honorees. We have Zoe Rufton from East Elementary, or are supposed to. Zoe, Zoe, come on up here for just a minute, and do we have an adult to brag on Zoe? Excellent. It could be a kid to brag on, or I don't care. Tell us about Zoe, sir.
Uh, David, commissioners, Mr. Schipper and Bennett, I'm Ray Black from Swain East, and I am Zoe Rufton's fifth grade teacher. You know, as a teacher, we like to have to recognize when students really put, you know, work hard, show marked improvement, bring academic scores up, and just you can see the improvement. That's not why she's here tonight. She's here because she started here already at fifth grade, if not above, many levels. She is an excellent student. She's a remarkable student. She's quiet, she comes to work, comes to school, she does everything, and she's done before you can say, you know, what do we do next, Mr. Black? She not only is sets the bar for class, but she is also a role model for my students, and she mentors quite a bit of my students. She has done more than what she has to do, and she is a remarkable, remarkable student. And I really feel blessed and really privileged to have her in my class. It was an absolute easy nomination to Mrs. Sutton to recommend her for recognition. She's a great student, and whatever she does in life, she's going to be successful at it. She is hard to keep busy.
So Miss Sutton, that means we should go ahead and vote her in middle school?
How can I keep her?
Keep her a few more years? Maybe hire her as Mr. Black's assistant, how's that? Well, Zoe, we are so proud of you, and it's awesome, wonderful, to be able to present you with an award as a one percent. How about point one percent? And we have a young man from East named Boone Gonzalez who is here today as well. Boone, come on up here. Love your shirt, man. Tell us about Boone, Miss.
Um, I'm Miss Davis, I'm in kindergarten at East Elementary. Boone is in my kindergarten class at East, and when we were talking about this award, we were talking about, you know, the reasons why we think he's very deserving of this award, because our team at East, that includes Miss Terry, who he loves dearly, has seen him grow way more than one percent. I mean, just it is amazing, one percent more every day, I think, fits him perfectly because of the not only academic growth that he has made, but the social emotional growth that he has made. He loves coming to school, he has many, many friends, he is becoming a leader in our classroom, and just he's his effort is a hundred percent all the time. Do you have anything to add, Miss Terry?
Boone has grown so much. I'm so blessed. Boone has been such a challenge, and I was.
Well, Boone has made progress this year because he's got some wonderful people work with him, so thank him. Her? So Boone, congratulations, you're one of our one percent. And then from Swain Middle School, I believe we have Miss Stephanie Davis. Stephanie, come on.
I'm Miss Carr, I teach eighth grade social studies, and the eighth grade team picked Stephanie because she has such an integrity about her, and Ms. Harris said she's one of the most considerate and sweet students, and that's so important at the middle grades level. And but above that, so one of the things that I feel is so important with this, this age, she's an advocate, and not just for her circle of friends, but for others. There was a couple instances that she's brought up to me and the other teachers that were pretty serious, and without her help, we wouldn't have known. Another thing she's done is she addressed the bathrooms, so she came up to me, she's like, "Miss Carr, we need to do something about the bathrooms." And of course, we know that it's limited of what we can do, but she made a list of stuff that, you know, could make it better, so went to Amazon, and went shopping, and we fixed it up. That was easy to do, but what it did, it encouraged a whole other circle of friends, of different kids, and in different classes, too, they've taken ownership, making sure feminine supplies were taken care of, and just different parts of the bathroom, you know, and it like sparked something. So that's like, I mean, she has all the habits, like she shows those. So that's why we picked Stephanie. She's great.
I think the principal cried just now, I'm not sure. Zach Pipkin is here, or he's not with us.
No, sir, he's not here.
Just one more for this. We have some awards that we want to give to schools this evening. Could I please have the principals of East and West Elementary come up? Aren't you glad that you're here? Every year, our schools and our students are involved in EOG tests, and there are some expectations for growth that the state sets for each and every school and each and every school system. And this year, we are very pleased with the fact that both East Elementary and West Elementary met their academic growth projections from the state of North Carolina. And so to both of you and to your staff, thank you so much. Now, Ryan, you get to come up and you get to stand here for Mr. Kerr. Oh, you work as assistant, okay. There are multiple levels of growth listed from the state. You can meet growth, but the one that you're always shooting for is to exceed growth. I mean, that makes our principals mouth water, because that's where they want to be. And although I'm not a real strong fan of the way that our state rates and grades our schools, because I think that it's slanted in one direction more than another, I am still exceptionally proud of the fact that Swain Middle School not only met, but they exceeded growth, and that's the year after they were kind of put on a, in a group to watch, and they actually were considered low performing. And so they climbed out of that in one year. That's an exceptional accomplishment for the middle school, for their staff, and for everyone. And that's not to say that we're not proud of our other schools, but whenever there is significant progress, we need to take note of that. So thank you, Ryan, and would you please call Mr. Kerr and tell him that he has, no, he doesn't have to. Look at that! Zach, come on.
Only for labels.
This is Zach or Zachary Pipkin? He's part of Swain Middle School.
All right, I'm gonna tell him about you, all right. You ready? All right. So the sixth grade team chose Zachary for tonight's award, and they wrote a little paragraph about him, so I want to share that with you. Zachary's unwavering dedication to improvement across all subjects is truly a shining light. One outstanding achievement Zachary has accomplished this year is that he scored the highest in his class on the science final exam. He pours his heart into his ELA classes, consistently striving for progress, and in math, he's a natural leader, guiding his peers with enthusiasm and expertise. His contributions to each class are so impactful, so constant, that it feels like he embodies the one percent better every day among them. He doesn't just show up and participate, he actively engages, inspires, and elevates the learning experience for everyone around him. We couldn't be prouder of his journey, and we know he'll continue to shine brighter with every step he takes.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations to y'all. Thank you, thank you, David, proud of all of them. Those are all of our awards tonight. Past that, if you all want to stay and be part of the rest of the business, you're absolutely welcome to. Did we miss anyone tonight? Did we miss anyone? No? Okay. If you want to stay, you're welcome to, but we've got to get to the business portion. Okay? Thank you all. Okay, all right.
And I said that was the last thing?
It will be, okay? It'll be part of the consent agenda. Okay? So if they vote favorably in that, that means you have a job, if not, you're...
I think we can go ahead and get started with the six o'clock, three, six, eleven. We'll begin with our pledge and prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we thank you once again for this setting, we thank you for our county, we thank you for our district, we thank for everybody that's involved, teachers, faculty, staff, most of all the students, most of all the parents of the students, the families that support our system. And Lord, we ask you to be with us with every decision that we make, that we would put you on the forefront of our minds, and just be reminded, David, that you love us, you care for us, and it's by your grace that we're sustained, and by your grace that we make it. Lord, we thank you for this opportunity one more time. We hope it honors you, we ask all these things, precious holy name. Amen.
All ready to order? The first item is the approval of the agenda.
I have no additions.
I have no additions, however, I do need to ask, does anyone have any objections to one of these consent agendas? Anyone? Seeing none, I believe that that is good to go, so. Motion to second to approve the gen eighty discussion, all favor by short hands.
You have in your hands, or at least in your digital device, a number of policies that have come through to us from North Carolina School Board Association. Many of the adjustments that are in those had to do with laws that were passed back in the summer. I met with Mr. Carson and Mr. Taylor last Friday, and we went through these, and they made some suggestions. And the reason that you have another copy of policy four through sixteen dress code is because those suggestions then went to our legal team, and they in turn made some suggestions, but what you wanted to put in place was not affected by that, largely I consider to be the secretary of law. You made a suggestion about the Family Medical Leave Act, and the suggestion that you made strengthened it is still there. However, there were some pieces that we were talking about striking out, and Ashley Leonard said, "Those are law, we can't, you can take them out, but they'll still be effective." So I put them back here. Ninety-one twenty-five, I don't know if I gave you another copy of that one or not, but it has to do with participation of minority businesses. And, Arlo, you were asked a question about what that particular paragraph meant, and I spoke with or emailed Ashley, and she said that it basically means that it is our goal to include ten percent minority businesses in the application process. Hey, if we reach that, that's great, if we don't, it's just a goal, okay? But whether or not a business is a, qualifies with a minority certificate or not, they're still considered equally when it comes time to contract approval, okay? And I spoke with Stephanie about that today, and we're all in the same page, okay? So I think the things that you were concerned about are taken care of, okay? Other than that, you have copies of all of those policies. Mr. Carson or Mr. Taylor, is there anything that you want to draw attention to or not? This is first reading, so this is not an approval.
Man, what we discussed, and y'all have a copy of, we made some minor changes on the dress code, we added, we added some things in there, and I think, I think by having questions, I'm gonna quit adding, I guess.
Well, there's opportunity between now and the next meeting, whenever this is considered for approval, to have additional discussion if you want to. And a suggestion, a suggestion to Mr. White, is that we schedule a meeting between now and February regular meeting, because there is some training. and February regular meeting, because there, there is some, some training that you all need to go through, and it might be a good idea for us to sit down and do that training together, and then we can just make that a work session. And if we wanted to have a conversation about these, at that point, we can have some of them. Okay? I'll put that on that agenda, that's conversation. Is that, is that pleasing with every ear? And if there are, if there's no other conversation about these tonight, then we'll, we'll move them forward. And the next time that they come before this session, or this type of work session, we will look for approval. Okay? That's, that's the bulk of our meeting tonight. However, Dr. Sutton is in, in charge of a lot of things that have to do with medical and counseling and things like that, and there needs to be a change in an official name for the school system for some Medicaid purposes. And, and Mr. Sutton was going to talk to us about that for just a minute, and then we're going to ask that you approve in just a little while, changing that official name.
The, the approval is actually to register for NC TRAC. So as part of IDA, which is the Individual Disability Disabilities Educational Improvement Act, it authorized schools to build Medicaid for vision screening, hearing screening, if we provide speech language services, psychological counseling services, physical therapy, occupational therapy. I think that sums up all of them. So that's all connected to a student's IEP, Individualized Education Plan. And part of that is, requires parental consent also. So when we place a student, the student qualifies in for special education. As we're drafting their first IEP, a part of that first initial meeting is also to get consent to build Medicaid. And as we get one-time consent, we submit, submit it, and then NC TRAC determines if the kid's eligible for Medicaid, and we get small, well, we actually, it's, it's pretty, it's very helpful money that we get back, and I'll talk about the budget of that money shortly. So NC TRAC is what I'm getting, and requesting permission to reapply for. We've been with NC TRAC for some time. It is the North Carolina Department of Human Services Medicaid Tracking, and we have to have access to that, and we use Fairbanks and InfoHandler. Fairbanks does cost reporting, it's quarterly report. They provide some supervision and make sure that we're using our money correctly, that we're connecting the appropriate personnel to our Medicaid billing. And then InfoHandler handles the day-to-day. So if one of our speech pathologists, they provide services today, they've got to get, report, this is what I did with the student, this was the outcome, the date on the student, and then InfoHandler will, we get a monthly check from them for the billable hours that we provide that, the, that month. And then Fairbanks is a quarterly reimbursement. They're, they say, here's everybody that had input into the Medicaid system, whether that's somebody that enrolled a student, that's a teacher that provided services, and, and then how much their time went into that, and we get a portion of that back. So the Fairbanks money is PRC three oh five, and that goes into our general account. And so that helps with just general overall running of the school system as part of Medicaid. And in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, those two years combined, we're a year behind, we're a year behind, so we're just now getting in twenty twenty-three monies. Between twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, we amassed five hundred and four thousand, five hundred dollars, and then that goes into general account. InfoHandler, which is our monthly billing, comes directly into, into special education as PRC three oh six. And in that, I've received, EC received a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars last year. We have a little bit of carryover every year, and in last year's budget, out of that three hundred, out of that three point, uh, three oh six, eighty-four thousand of that went to contracted services. We contract for an additional psychologist, we contract for speech language at pre-k, we contract for physical therapy through Shannon Lowdenak, and what other? And nursing. We had, we had, we had two students last year. We're done with one student that requires full-time nursing aid. So those contracts, that is the bulk of our Medicaid money. Fifteen thousand of it covers professional development. So each fall, the EC conference, and I've seen several people with that, that is the bulk of our, of our cost for professional development. We spent nine thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars in supplies. For example, breeding eggs for our extended one classroom out of West Elementary, we'll buy that. I'm doing a PTO in tomorrow. So we buy stuff like that, buy some basic classroom supplies for teachers. And also, we try to keep a nice EC manual of like shortcuts and how-tos for teachers, so it buys the material that we put in there. It also covers field trip for our extended one classrooms. Last year, we spent three thousand five hundred on different field trips. And so we totaled last year, we spent a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, only brought in a hundred and twenty-five thousand, so they into our carryover. And we, we currently carryover from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, thirty-six thousand dollars. So we've got a little nest egg to help this year. So what I'm asking for tonight is we have to reapply for NC TRAC, which allows us to build Medicaid. And I had to have approval to renew our application. As of like four o'clock on January fourth, I got an email saying I needed official approval to reapply. I checked this afternoon, and it says we have been approved, but we went ahead. We're going to ask for you to approve us to reapply to build Medicaid. It is a significant amount of money that helps fund a large portion, EC special education. Most of my, most of EC salaries are funded through the state, and the federal government funds, we, we fund like four or five salaries, six salaries total through, through federal fundings. And it leaves no money for professional development or supplies for teachers. So this Medicaid money, it also allows us to do bus monitors, come out of this money. We have to acquire a bus monitor and homebound, if a student goes on homebound services. This, this Medicaid money also covers those, those costs. So I'm asking tonight for you to approve for us to reapply to NC TRAC, to build Medicaid for the services that are eligible.
Any questions for Dr. Sutton?
I make a motion, we, we apply.
And that was, that was the last item for discussion, so if we want to move that right now, I, I don't see that there's a problem. So, Arlo has motion to that.
Second. Any discussion?
I have a question. Was there something different with the name change part?
Well. This has been a nightmare. This has been ongoing since October. I've submitted, I don't know how many applications. NC, when we originally applied NC TRAC, it was under Mike Tredway and Janice Tender. And we are listed as Swain County Schools. We, our IRS, we are officially Swain County Public Schools. So because the initial one was Swain County Schools, and our IRS, we are Swain County Public Schools, we've had to jump through a lot of hoops to, to, through the national database, NPPES, change our name to match our IRS official name, Swain County Public Schools. So we have jumped through those hoops, and we are now Swain County Public Schools on all of our Medicaid billing stuff.
You understand.
I, I'm actually going through the exact same thing. Yeah, I just didn't, I just wasn't sure what the official name.
That, that's all, it was, it's just that insignificant in some way, so that is very significant. And I believe that Dr. Sutton has earned us a third master's in hoop jumping.
Yeah. I know about Medicaid this one time.
And we appreciate that, thank you. I appreciate that so much, so.
There's a motion in the second. Any favor, discussion? All in favor, show of hands. Motion passes.
I would also recommend that the Swain County Board of Education approve policy forty-sixty, Native American policies and procedures as it has been presented to you.
Motion. Second. Any discussion? All in favor, show of hands. Passing the evidence.
I would also recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve the consent agenda, which includes all personnel at the December eleventh, twenty twenty-three events.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, show of hands. Passing the evidence.
Those are all of the action items for this evening. I don't believe that we have any public comment tonight. And I would love if you could look at your calendars and that we could schedule the opportunity for some conflict of interest training. It seems that Monday nights work best for a lot of you. Is that true? There's, for the next month, I don't see any athletic events on that evening, right now. Twenty-second of January and the twenty-ninth, I would, we should probably stay away from the fifteenth, since that's a holiday, or February fifth. What are those, which of those days suit you, if any of them?
Twenty-second, too.
Twenty-second? Is that good?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, twenty-second, and at this point, right now, let's, let's plan on meetings at the, the central office. We may need to, to discuss that again. I don't know when the elevator's going to be done, but this will be scheduled as a, as a training for conflict of interest, and also as a work session for more policies at meeting. Okay?
Twenty-two.
Six, good? Now, this, this is a two-hour training. Six, okay?
We can go over them.
Yeah, let's start at five.
Start at five.
I don't want to keep you all up past your bed.
Do you want any juice?
I'll, I'll make muscadine grape juice there.
About clock.
About clock, yes. You have some points of interest for the January calendar? And other than that, our next meeting, official regular meeting will be on February twelve, and I don't know the location.
And do we need to look at times in March potentially for the meeting?
Yes. If you could give to me some dates that would be good for you in the month of March.
March gives me, maybe the first week. You have to wait sometime when we, uh.
This is for the, combined with the Cherokee School.
They come here this year.
They come here. And we probably should have a couple of dates, so it might be best if I send you an email, and then you can put several dates on there, and I'll, I'll mix them together somehow, and then send them to Superintendent Burry, and let them come up with them, okay? I'll send that email right now, just to. Is there an, is there a need tonight for a close session?
Not that I'm aware of.
Then that clears our agenda, sir.
Motion, jury?
Motion. Second.
Notice what time it is, but.
Wow. You said thirty.
I said thirty.